All right, we'll convene a business session. Order the school board. First item on the agenda is report on student staff recognition.
Did you have an item on that one?
Is there anything?
I thought you had an item you wanted to...
Students going to...
Oh, graduates.
Oh, the graduates.
Yes.
Age, no. I just wanted to wish our graduates, or five graduates, that you approved the last couple board minute, or remember, or a couple meetings. They were a couple meetings. Now I put myself on Madison O'Connor, Aiden Schultz.
Reese Bender.
Reese Bender.
Natalie Muck.
Natalie Muck.
Are you attending Neymar early grad?
Yep.
Madison, Reese, Aiden.
Oh, and Autumn Zaba. So Friday will be their last day in our building, and I think the seniors have a little special well, or, you know, ceremony for them, just their group to say goodbye, and then they'll come, they're all coming to plan and come back for graduation, to celebrate with their seniors. So, they got big plans, they're excited.
Yep, the only other student staff recognition is that Kathy Guzzi, our school nurse, in the last few years, is retiring prior to our next board meeting. So thank her for her service.
All right, thank you. Next item is president's report. First item on there is board member attendance. We are all in attendance. Next item is reading of TPI proclamation recognition of adult school crossing guard recognition week. Whereas Wisconsin's adult school crossing guards provide an invaluable service in helping to ensure the safe passage for our youngest, most vulnerable pedestrians, children walking between home and school. And whereas adult school crossing guards typically serve with the dedication that discounts the rigors of harsh weather, split shifts, and heavy traffic, and these rigors are continually compounded by the challenges prevented by COVID-19. And whereas for more than five decades, adult school crossing guards have served communities to make them more secure, and whereas adult school crossing guards add to the effectiveness of the student safety patrol members with whom they often serve and whose activity they help direct, and whereas adult school crossing guards help reinforce in the minds of the young people, they assist in the importance of traffic hazard identification and safe street crossing behavior. Therefore, being resolved that I, Carolyn Stanford Taylor, state superintendent of public instruction, declare the week of January 11th through the 15th, 2021, Adult School Crossing Guard Recognition Week, a time to recognize and thank the many adult school crossing guards whose commitment makes a difference in the lives of children in Wisconsin's public schools.
Tomorrow, Mr., or Police Chief Scott Drew and I will be going and recognizing our crossing guards.
Thank you for all, all that they do. All right. Next item, next board meeting is February 10th, 2021.
And a location change on that, we'll be at the high school. We're having work done here in this building at that time, we're having the duct work here thoroughly cleaned, so. It's gonna probably be in the cafeteria is what we're planning on at this point, I think.
Okay. Next item is administrative reports. First one, report on school nurse and COVID-19 update superintendent cross.
So my report this evening, yes, school nurse and COVID-19 updates. Our new school nurse, we began to onboard this week, her name is Katie Bortz, she is an RN, and she is coming to us through an arrangement we've made with CISA 5. We're working with our cooperative educational agency on this, and they've, they've been working on developing nursing services for their members of schools. Katie's coming to us with over 10 years' experience in emergency department nursing. That's where she's coming to us from, is the emergency department. She wanted to, she wanted, she, a bit of a change of lifestyle with her kids, she's got some kids in school and whatnot, so she wanted to change things up a little bit in her life. And this was an opportunity that CISA brought forth, and she jumped on. She'll be providing two days per week, and we'll have the ability to do some consult on other days, and she would not be in the district. During the transition period over the next couple weeks, Kathy Guzzi will continue to provide services until her full contract hours are completed. That's kind of been a nebulous thing, because some days it's been a little more than others. And so, but there will be a couple more weeks here yet with Kathy, and what we're gonna end up doing is Katie will be the two days, and then Kathy will be a couple other days a week, so that they're not here at the same time necessarily. That way, we're getting maybe a little more pain for the buck that way. We certainly wish Kathy happy and long retirement. I know she and her husband have already made plans that way. We're excited to have Katie onboard with us. I was told that her strengths are organization, she's very highly organized and operates from organization as like number one, and she has passion for nursing. She comes to us with so much knowledge, and this wouldn't surprise me, we didn't even have to get her certified to do the COVID testing that we do here in school, because she already does it, so we're all good to go there. With our response to COVID-19, just shifting gears a little bit, we certainly continue to have a close working relationship with Wood County Health Department. As of today, and since Christmas, at the moment, we've had one student identified with COVID-19. That student actually did not return from Christmas to us yet, so they were not in the building or anything of that nature. As has been typical, at any given moment, we could have two students, we could have 20 students, we could have two staff members, we could have four staff members, quarantined for various reasons, and that's certainly the case at the moment. We've got a couple of staff in quarantine and some students, and they're quarantined because they're close contacts, or maybe they've started to exhibit some symptoms. We do test, we do offer to test any student or staff member that may be presenting symptoms, we have that capability. It typically takes us, we can do the swab here in school, either our health aide or our nurse, those get picked up in the afternoon, and we're usually seeing results two, maybe three days out, so. And that's the full PCR test, the full test, not the, not the rapid test. We're gonna, at the time being, so that testing program is being run as a, as a program from Wood County and Marshfield Clinic. We were actually one of the first places in the state to do testing in schools, so, you know, we've been doing this since October, we're truly one of the very first places that could do that. Additionally, Wood County staff has already worked to get some of our staff vaccinated. As of the moment, we have one staff member who's been vaccinated, we have two more that are eligible for vaccination, and their eligibility is a factor of their working as nurse, health aide, or direct, like special education therapy or something of that nature. Teachers, classroom teachers, aides in general are not there yet, other school support staff are not there yet, but we were given some identification of some potential staff, and we presented those to the county, and like I said, right now, we have one vaccinated and one going tomorrow, so. And just to give you a heads up, we also, early on, did identify to the county that, you know, certainly if the county needs to do a mass vaccination clinic, that we would work with them if they need facilities in this area. One of the things they had talked about was the possibility where they identified Port Edward School as being a possibility of the mass vaccination clinic that would be open to say, students and their families, faculty members and their families, and doing it in that nature, when that time would arrive, and whenever they need to do mass vaccination. That would probably be a little different than staff members being in what's called Tier 1B. I think they're looking at more like if, once they get ramped up to do more mass vaccination of general public, so. Just as a credit to our maintenance staff, you know, they've certainly continued to keep the facilities extensively cleaned on a daily basis, and they've looked at other items, as I mentioned earlier. We're gonna do a full duct cleaning in this building, and we've got duct work in the other building that we're working on and getting cleaned. Sorry to report that it's probably been an item that's not been done very often in the 50 years' history of this building, probably not at all, and so we're working on some of those items to, again, increase air quality and efficiency as well in the building, but certainly air quality. And we've done some things with our systems, the GPS units that I've talked about in the past and whatnot. Good service is continuing to serve both in person and lunches for those students virtual. I would note on that, that we have had, since the beginning of the year, the calendar year, we've had several students returned back into the district in both the elementary building and in the middle school, high school building. We do have some more who are gonna be slated to return in the next week when we change semesters, so coming on as virtual learning. As of today, we have less than 50 students in virtual learning. I think at the peak, we were probably closer, we were in that 60s, over 60s, so. As we move to second semester, just a couple of changes, we've worked to make sure that every teacher at the middle school, high school has a prep period. There's a big change from the first semester, where many of our teachers had two preps on one day and no preps on another, and so I want to thank the guidance staff, Ms. Moore, Ms. Neave, special education staff, who have certainly put in a lot of time to figure that schedule out and make that happen. Additionally, we've learned that our capabilities and the, we've learned from, from the pandemic as we've gone on and learned what our capabilities are. One of the items, and we worked with the health department on this, we're no longer going to keep our middle school kids in one classroom for all of their core classes. We are gonna begin to move them around and leave teachers in their classrooms. We are gonna do it, the kids will still be in cohort groups, so they will only be with their cohort group throughout the schedule, but we're gonna do it so that fifth and sixth are moving at one time period, seventh and eighth are moving at another. After some discussion, you know, we've certainly been doing this all along in the high school end, we've truly been doing it in the middle school, just not for the core classes, so those kids have had some of that already, but to maybe bring some sanity to the teaching staff in the sense of the kids they have to deal with on the virtual side and, and the prep and the planning, trying to keep the teaching staff just in their home base. The teaching staff is gonna increase, you know, when you're only dealing with one group of kids in one classroom for four different hours, you know, it's maybe, you know, if Suzie and Johnny are seated in the same places, you don't have to worry about washing their desks every time, or all the time, they're, that, so that is one area, the staff's gonna have to pick up, the staff that, the staff that's now gonna be in their home base, they're gonna have to pick up on that. The high school staff has certainly been doing that all along, other staff have, that staff will just have to pick up on some of the cleaning of these two classes. One adjustment we made, just with athletics since we last spoke, we did go to more of a reciprocal system. We ran into some problems where our fans, some schools will let away fans in, some won't, and the problem we've run into is there were a couple of schools that were not letting away fans in, and as well, charging our fans to watch the game, livestream the game. There's nothing we can really do about what that school's choice is. However, what we can do is certainly decide who's gonna walk into our gym, and I guess we tried to be very neighborly about this, and we've maybe pulled that back a little bit, because it was also evident from a couple of the videos and things of watching these games where our fans weren't, and not only did we couldn't have our fans there, but those who wanted to watch the game had to pay for it, and then to see probably what would be heckling and other things going on in those gyms of our athletes, so it was very obvious, like, okay, we tried to be neighborly about this, so we've moved to more of a reciprocal system. If you let our fans in, we're gonna let your fans in, otherwise, we are gonna continue to livestream our games, we're not gonna charge our people, our community for that, we don't need to, and so we moved to that. Final comment that I have for you, and I just wanted to mention as part of my report, the Pittsville School District, the Pittsville School Board has invited each of you to attend part or all of the WSB convention in the Pittsville Auditorium. They can do quite a bit of social distancing in their auditorium. They have a laser projector, high-quality sound system for general assembly speakers, and a robust wireless system for when people are in their own sessions, and they'll have headphones if needed. They'll be able to socially distance by person and by district while sharing the space. The auditorium is modern facility, easy to access, has restrooms near and away from the students, the restroom's near, but away from the students, and district administrator says that certainly that if our board is interested, we're welcome to, you're welcome to go there, I would just need to let them know that. Lunch is available, and it's gonna be brought in from restaurants, and it would be throughout the entirety of the convention. I just need to know that. The other thing I would need to know, if you plan on going over, I may go over there for a general session or two, but I would just say that if you do intend to do that, please let us know, and if more than one of you intends to do that, we may have to just do our notice that board members may be in the same place, you know, like we would do for a normal convention.
That's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday?
I believe so, yeah, so. And if you want to, maybe just give me an email on that, and I can let them know. And again, all are part of it, so. That is the bulk of my report, any questions?
Thank you. Next item is report on special education open enrollment for 2021, '22, so little as quickly.
I'm gonna put the document in front of them.
Sure.
So.
Later on in the agenda, you will see an approval for our open enrollment spaces for the next school year that we normally do in January. I just want to go through the special education side of it and talk about how we come about those numbers. Every year, we look at our current enrollment in special education, and then we have to look in a crystal ball and predict somehow how many kids we will have coming into our district, how many kids will qualify for special education that are already here, and somehow come up with a number as to how many kids we will accept from, from open enrolled students that are special education, that if they would apply to come in the district, we would allow to come in, and that is based on how many teachers we have available here on our, and how full their caseloads are. So it's a kind of a tricky process, and we take into consideration any students we have right now that are going through the process of qualifying for special education, we take into consideration any other things that we might know about students, especially in the 4K kindergarten area, that we might be looking at, that might be, be referred very soon, that we know might be, we call, kind of like our buffer, we kind of put a couple in there because we have to save spots for those kids in case they would be referred. We also have to save spots knowing that there could be kids moving in our district, you know, that might need those spots as well, so we have to, we have to take all those things into consideration. So when you look at the numbers, right now, our numbers where it says current enrollment, our speech and language numbers have pretty much stayed the same, that is a very big number for one person to have all those speech and language kids. And those kids aren't necessarily different, some of those kids who have speech and language services are also coming in the special education services below that, they may have speech and language and other special ed services, some of them aren't, some of them are speech and language only. However, since they're two separate services, we are counting them because they're working with a speech and language pathologist, and they're working with a special education teacher, so that's why they're in both places. So for speech and language there, we're giving ourselves a little buffer there, so obviously we have no spaces available, we have one teacher to 29 kids right now, and she services this building, the other building, and our 4K kiddos at the Y. So we're very fortunate that she's that good, and she, she, she does, she does a really good, good job with those kids. Another tricky part is our early childhood, because we also share those kiddos, some of those early childhood kids with NCCUSA, so we have to count the kids that we have our 66030 contracts with, so we count those kids because they're, they are on our caseloads as well, or at least on our, on our, you know, in our enrollment count, and so we have to keep in, in those in mind, but we also have to realize that that's a lot of time where those 4K and kindergarteners come in where that's where they're identified. So usually, that's where we leave the most spaces open, and last year, we had three spaces that we approved there, and we're keeping that at three spaces for, for next year as well. The, the one that looks a little strange is the, the elementary 1 through 4. Right now, as you notice, the, the numbers move down, where you see our 5, 8, and 9, 12 numbers get bigger for next year, because right now, we have quite a few kids in fourth grade that turn to fifth grade or next year, so the number gets quite a bit bigger at the upper grades. However, if you look horizontally across, the number goes from 5 to 12 for our projected enrollment. The reason for that is because we have five students that we're projecting coming in because we, we have a family we know that's moving to town, we have a couple of kids that are, have been referred or are in the process, that we are right now with IED meetings, and then we also had to buffer for one or two kids that could potentially be ours. So that's how we got the difference of seven kids right there. So that's why that number looks so different, because we had to take all those kids into account. That still gives us a spot to have two kids at the elementary school that we would have room for from open enrollment numbers that could potentially qualify, that could, could, could be qualified from open enrollment numbers that we would have space available at the elementary. And then you see our middle school, high school numbers, which that's where a lot of those, a lot of those numbers are moving towards, and obviously, we have to, again, look at the numbers we have a kid, a kiddo or two qualifying, we have to give ourselves a little buffer there, knowing that we have other kids in our own district that we have to take into account, and so we have no, no spaces available there. So that's why those numbers differ among those columns or between those columns, is because all of those behind-the-scenes things that are happening that, that we have to take into account for and look for in the foreseeable future that we know are still happening right now in this school year, looking towards next year. And best laid plans, we could have, you know, six families move in with, and our numbers could explode, we don't know. We could have six families move out, we don't know, but this is our best guess, best educated guess. I did take the current enrollment number and the projected enrollment number from this year and compared it to last year, I added those numbers together, it would be exact same number difference when I added it up. I don't know how that happened, but it did, so it, it's, it happened to be the difference of the exact same amount. They are just in different areas because of those kids moving up a grade, so. That's just how those numbers come to be, so.
Was there any area?
What's that?
Was there any area in this past, was there any area in this past year where we came close, where we bumped up against the threshold and had to deny someone?
This year, no, just because we had, we didn't have many open enrollment kids coming in because of COVID, a lot of kids, you know, chose to go either virtual or just stay where they were at this year. In the past, we have had two denied kids that have wanted to come to our district and open enroll, we have had to say we just wanted these spaces available.
The other thing that happens is, if you're an open enrolled student in our district, in your regular education, but then you're referred for special education, it is very possible that if we have a cap in place, that you end up having to go back to your home district. That has happened as well.
That we have faced, where we've had a student who's open enroll, has qualified for special education, and we have to say, you either need to deny the services if you want to stay here, or you have to go back to your home school, and that really is an awful thing to have to do, but we have to set this cap, otherwise, you know, the cap is the cap, unfortunately. You know, having those, those two spots at the elementary school helps us avoid that situation, or we can, you know, if this, if a child wants to open enroll here, it does give us a little bit of wiggle room, but it, it does happen, and it's not just our district that does this. Rapids has zero spaces available across the board, NCCUSA has zero spaces available across the board, it's, it's just because their caseloads are full, so.
You just answered my question, but like, speech and language, if next year it, it stays at 29, and it doesn't go to 33, we still deny?
Correct.
Because we have a zero.
The number is the number, we can't, yes, and if those, and also, if kids would move out, that doesn't change the number, like, we can't say, oh, three kids, like, or sometimes if, if a kid is, is dismissed from special education, that doesn't mean that that's an extra space that we have available, we can't, we can't be constantly.
That space is reserved for residents' students.
Reserved for resident students, correct.
The only option those people would have would be to move in at this point?
Yeah.
All right, any other questions? Thank you. Next item is report on course options, spring 2021, Principal's report.
So, we hope, we think, this COVID has put us busy working, but like Kyle said, we're ready with counseling, working overtime for our, our semester to start on Tuesday. We've had a number of kids return, so in the high school, everybody is scheduled, good to go, there was a couple finalizing things today. We have nine students as of, I still have to make some phone calls, but give or take, nine students in the high school that'll be virtual only, or permanently virtual, not because of, you know, in or out, or contact, or COVID. We've just, or every middle school and high school teacher will have a prep, like I said, Jen is meeting with a couple of them that are just finalizing their schedules. We're still using the Apex new, the new program that we switched to, next semester, we think there will be about five students on Apex. Next semester, it'll be for those doing recovery courses. This semester, we had a student or two that wanted to graduate early, so we accommodated them, and they might have been taking a class that we didn't offer this fall semester. We also have about, emergent school, what did we say?
Wisconsin Emergency School?
Yes.
Two right now, possibly three.
And these are kids that have career paths, that we just don't have that specialized class, and we look across the board, and there's nothing that fits in their schedule or of their interest, so we go out there and find something, and they're kind of working independently with just a teacher overseeing them, and that's about two, maybe three we're working on. Currently, there are 14 juniors and seniors that have signed up and you've approved to go to mid-state classes. These are popular classes such, for example, nine students are into sociology, I'm just giving you a couple of examples, five in our Intro to Diverse Studies, and five or four into Developmental Psychology. Those are common classes, there are a couple, a couple that are rare, one kid is going to take piping applications, which obviously don't offer at our school, and another one, hardware essentials. So what I'm gonna come to you in, in the next board meeting is, we were, are working with our teachers that we have here, and that have, or they're talking about furthering their career, they've met with mid-state, they've met with Jen, and they're looking at getting certified to teach some of those classes at our district. We have three teachers in the loop right now, we're pretty far, next board meeting, I'll come to you, tell you where they're at, what they're gonna do, and we're looking at the classes that are popular, those classes that we're sending nine, you know, can we offer that here as dual credit with mid-state? And so I'll report on that next, you know, we gotta look at, we just can't put four more classes on a teacher, what, what classes are popular and what they'll be certified for. Middle school, currently, when we start this next semester, we will have 11 on virtual school, five, six, seven, eight, 11 students total. There was like, there was almost 15 students that returned, are returning this week or next week, that were slated for semester two virtual, and they've come back. We're many, beginning to transmit or transition on Tuesday, they've been working with kids all week, this, like, the six seventh acres have transitioned before, but we met as a team and said, what are your concerns, how are we gonna do this safely? So we're looking at Bell. So we're looking at belts changing, we're looking at cleaning, seating charts, hallway movement, lunch. The advantage to this is definitely the tech. So the teachers will have to put in some time in the hall and with the seating charts and the cleaning. But again, they were struggling with the tech going from room to room and the virtual and some of that will go by the wayside. So it really helped them in their classroom, having other supplies and their own tech programs, whatever they're running. And this was the first week that we were back to five days. It was probably tough for the kids and some teachers, but we're looking good for numbers and everybody's happy to be there. And we've got one more full day of education. I had my conference meeting today and a lot of schools are looking at that, going back and trying to get back to five days. So that's where we're at. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is questions and comments from people in attendance. Did anyone sign up to speak? No? Okay. Move on to consent agenda. Number eight, seek approval of minutes in the past meeting, December 9th, 2020.
Move.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carried. Number nine, consider approval of financial reports. Do you have a note on this?
Yep, I just wanted to bring to your attention, I think I mentioned it a while back, that GAZBEE, which is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, they issued, it's GAZBEE 84. GAZBEE 84 no longer permits the use of the due to organization liability accounts, which was our Fund 60. I mentioned that too. So what, if you noticed on the report for the activity counts, you notice that the credit amount line is all zeros. And that's because those accounts now have all been moved to Fund 21. So there will no longer be that separate student activity account run as a liability. It'll be run just like all of our other funds are. And so no longer will that be managed separately.
You noticed that a couple of those past classes still have.
Yeah, when we have plans for, well, Mr. Daven's daughter is the one I'm still struggling with. And then the class of 2017 is, they are, that's going to be a scholarship that will be hopefully expended this year. And then Ms. Daven and I will, one of these days connect. COVID, we were going to meet and then COVID hit the spring and so we just have not connected to get that taken care of. And then as you see, Towe is still there, but Mr. Connas has directed me to expend that out too. So we will no longer have that. We have used Towe for many years, so. Okay, so I just wanted to give you that. Update on that.
And gifts?
And gifts, okay. Gifts. First off, we, the elementary school received a bag of hand knit hats all the way from Florida from a Valerie Curler. I think, and she's, you know, giving things to us before. I'm not sure where she, how she does that. But Heather Lizitza informed me that Brenda McDonald has donated 10 cases of Ocean Spray juice for the backpack program. And then we had numerous, we received numerous donations for our Christmas cheer program this year. And due to the large number, we're going to put a, a thank you into the newsletter. And so that will thank all of those people that donated for that. So it was quite an extensive list, so it was very successful on that round. And then as Kyle mentioned, last month, we did receive the $18,000 grant from Dorothy Alexander, for the Dorothy Alexander Auditorium from the Alexander Foundation.
I did, I did send them basically a list of a thank you along with a list of items that we've completed with their previous donations. And what we were planning to do with the sound system and some things is kind of the final pieces of the upgrades with their current donation along with some pictures of some of the work that's gone on. So we sent, I sent each of the board members who made those personal contributions a letter on there, so.
And then there'll also be.
And then they also.
Also be a lot of these designed today.
And this, this particular grant, what made it interesting was it was totally unsolicited. So this was just a really nice thing at Christmas time.
Okay, with that, seek a motion to approve the financial report.
Some move.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to unfinished business. Number 10, second reading of policies that previously presented.
Yep, so we, just a quick review of the previous meeting where we read through that list of policies. Actually a little smaller than it normally is for a bunch of reasons. Specifically the legislature now making a bunch of new laws. So anyways, I would recommend your passage of those policy changes as presented previously.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carried. Our new business, number 11. Consider approval of open enrollment spaces for special education and regular education programs for the 2021, 22 school year.
So each January, the board has to take a moment to set open enrollment limits, if that's what you so choose. That's a statutory requirement to be done in January if you do that. Kara presented the special education open enrollment caps. The regular education open enrollment gaps are based on holding 30% of the open spaces for open enrollment. So that's ultimately what you see there. So when you look at, we look at first grade, you see we have, for next year, we project 29, we have 48 available spaces total available. That includes our current in there. 30% of the available spaces, or 30% of the difference is six. So there'd be six open spaces there. We keep that, try to keep that consistent for the most part throughout. That way if we're ever challenged on that, there's some reasoning that went in behind that. It reserves more spaces for residents and fewer spaces for open enrollments. But as you can see, most of the way through here, the numbers are fairly generous, the trade level. The other thing I would, I think I need to probably point out too is a student who comes in under special education actually also has to come in under the regular education limit. So if there's not a regular education space available, there's not a special education space available. Meaning if we've moved through, it's, it's, that, that regular education sets that for that grade level, that's the total. Within that, if there's special education space. So it's not extra, special education is an extra space. It's just within our total numbers where, how many special education students can we absorb? So. And, you know, this gives you a little bit of an idea too where what, at the moment, if we just shifted everybody forward, where the grade levels are at for enrollment. Kindergarten's always a toss-up. The kindergarten number, we've certainly had, yeah, I think we've had it be 16 and ended up with 32 students in kindergarten. So, you know, it's, that, that number fluctuates wildly, so.
I'll make the motion to consider approval of open enrollment spaces for special education and regular education programs for 2021, 2022 school year.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carried. Number 12, consider approval of 2020, 2021 coaching positions. A Danielle Peter, middle school girls basketball, and the other one is Ed Guesser, assistant high school baseball.
I'll just offer my recommendation to pass both of those positions. Danielle's already started with the middle school girls basketball and been doing a fine job with that today. And I guess we hope we have a baseball season. Just for a little bit of a note there, the spring seasons are moved back on the calendar from where they typically are. They've done a lot of adjusting this year and I think that starts a little later this year, so.
I will not vote on item number two.
I'll make a motion to approve the two coaching positions.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Well, I do have just a comment, I guess. I know a couple of years ago, Mr. Guesser made some comments during one of the games and actually created a little bit of a ruckus. Good with that? I mean, has that been discussed in his hiring process or?
Yeah, I think, I think we're beyond that at this point, so.
Resolve here?
Not here.
Just so that we don't have any.
Yeah, I'll make that clear with Shane and make sure that that is clear as well. I think we're beyond that, so.
Okay.
And that is an at-will position, so if there's, if there are issues or something, we can take an action to resolve that too, so.
True. With that, take a vote. All those in favor of coaching positions, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All those opposed? Those are approved. Next item is consider approval of extension of COVID-19 emergency sick leave.
I apologize, I did not print that. It is in your board packet. I should have printed your copy. I'm not sure if we need a copy. Do you have an extra copy?
I have a copy.
Okay.
I looked at it.
And if you've looked at it, so the, so the Families First Coronavirus Act and the emergencies paid sick leave portions of that all expired on December 31. The proposal I'm bringing forward to you would extend the emergency paid sick leave provisions as listed below through the end of the fiscal year, so June 30, 2021. The rationale behind that, we've, since this went into effect last spring, we've certainly had employees take advantage of that because they had to. They had to use that leave. It's not been a lot of employees, but some have had to use that. And to, it, it would have been very possible that an employee could have used that, that particular sick leave in December. But come January 1, the next person who gets sick has, there's, that leave doesn't exist. So our, the federal government did allow that leave to continue voluntarily for private employers because there's some tax credits attached to that and they can carry that leave on. We were trying to make this whole through our school year, so basically have it apply to the school year only. Employees who've used it already don't get a new allotment. They've used what they've had. Employees who used part of it, they still have part of it. And employees who haven't used any of it will have the full gamut available to them as outlined here. The only item, and I want to see what I sent you in the board packet, so just give me a moment. Just pull this up electronically. Only one item that I want to make sure, oh, I had it. If you bear with me, just a moment. In that. Thought I had sent you a different copy of this because there was one typo. And I want to make sure we don't, that we correct it before you pass it if the typo is in what's in your board packet, so. The one typo, it's there. I'm pulling it up electronically. Yep. Where it says paid leave entitlement, bullet point number three. Up to two weeks of paid sick leave at two-thirds qualifying, reason number five below for up to 200 daily and that should be 2,000, not 12,000. That would be my only amendment to what is, how to say typo.
Okay. With that amendment to the policy, seek a motion to approve the extension of COVID-19 emergency sick leave. Some move? Second. The motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carried. Number 14, consider approval of waiving the advance notice requirement for unpaid leave of absence requested by a teacher.
So we do have a teacher who's requested an unpaid leave of absence and this would be an extension of a leave that was already granted during the first semester. The teacher's asking to grant leave through the, through the third quarter at this time. Due to the situation, they weren't able to ask within the timeframe that the employee handbook outlines. But the employee handbook does have a provision in which the board can extend or grant, not an extension on the timeline, but grant relief from that timeline, basically waive that timeline. And I would recommend you waive that timeline, continue to grant this unpaid leave at this time.
Kyle will make that motion to waive the advance notice requirement.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Next item is consider approval of 6603 agreements with an NACUSA school district.
We have, presenting you with some 6603 agreements. These are all related to special education services. And I would ask at this time that you pass those agreements.
Some move.
Second. Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carried. Next item is consider approval of administrative support contract.
I would ask your approval to move Mr. Neave to an administrative support contract from his current hourly position as building and grounds director.
Some move? Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carried. Okay, next item. Opportunity for individual board member comment. Kathy.
I would like to just thank Kathy Guzzi for the time that she has given us in the district and wish her well with her retirement. And also I don't know how many of you watched, there was a voter forum for the seven candidates for state superintendent in Wisconsin. There are seven people running. And there will be a primary on February 16th, so I think we need to be aware of that. We of course want a good candidate in that position and I think it's important that we and the general public is aware of all their qualifications. It was a two-hour forum and personally, I was pleased with all of them and I thought they did a good job. So I think we've got some really good candidates, but I think they can get it down to two in the primary and then at the election in April, they'll be voting.
Neil.
I would second both the comments that Kathy made. By the time you have a staff member retiring from the district, it's, it's always sort of a bittersweet moment. They're moving on to a new part of their life and our experience will be different without them, so. So thank you Kathy for, for your efforts. Certainly is, is a very important educational issue to select a good superintendent, I would say. I would also like to, like to mention that, as we are painfully aware, it's been a very difficult week for a variety of reasons in the, in the national arena. We, we are better than this. We will move on and go in new directions and hopefully find, find our way again. It's always unfortunate when violence and difficulty appear in the manner that they did. And we have to make sure that the kids in the district know that that is unacceptable, inappropriate, and not the, not the appropriate way to resolve and settle differences in this agreement.
Eric. Yeah, thanks to Kathy Guzzi for all her service, definitely. Thanks again for the, and we commented on the donation in the last meeting. Very, very good again to get some more donations for the auditorium. Always great to see those things implemented there. Congratulations to those five students that early graduated and are speaking. And just, you know, eventually we'll, we'll get through this, so.
Second, everything that Kathy and Leo and Kerry said. Kind of getting through the first semester, lining up, thank all the teachers, staff, parents, custodians, everybody that's made it the first semester, get through. And the second semester starts next Tuesday, so hope for another good semester and things just keep rolling right along, so. Thanks for everybody's help.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I'd also like to thank Kathy for, Kathy Guzzi for her service to the district. Could see the winter sports season up and running. And just a general thank you to all the teachers and staff for working in these interesting COVID environments. And I guess that's all I have. And next board meeting is February 10th. Should we set it March 1, 2? March is, I didn't look it up.
Yeah, also.
March 10th would be our next meeting, or our meeting in March? So February 10th, March 10th. With that, call for adjournment.
Some move?
Second.
Motion to adjourn, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? We are adjourned.